Thank you and good afternoon. I'd like to call the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. The clerk, please call the row for established quorum.
Good afternoon, Miller.
Here.
Hagan? Hagan? Kemp?
Here.
Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is item B-12, which is the Internal Auditor's Calendar Annual Audit Plan, and Peggy Caskey is here to present this item for you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Caskey. Recognize.
Good afternoon. Should I share my screen here? And are you seeing my screen, the report? Um, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, I'm just gonna briefly go over the reports since we've already, um, have seen this before. We've gone through it. But, um, a careful risk assessment and audit planning process was developed to maximize the county internal auditor's office resources across a large number of auditable areas under the Board of County Commissioners organization. The strategic process was conducted in accordance with the international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing, which is often referred to as the Red Book Standards. The methodology of selecting assurance consulting and other audit services for the 2021 Annual Audit Plan is defined in this report. The Audit Plan was prepared to provide a core guide for audit services to be initiated during calendar year 2021. During the, uh, within the report, um, we will be talking about the internal audit activity governance, risk assessment methodology, risks, audit and, um, annual audit plan development in the 2021 Annual Audit Plan. Um, audit services selected for the 2021 Annual Audit Plan were derived from a variety of sources. This include risk assessment, commissioner and management request, resolution R-20-011 requirements, Hillsborough County Home Rule Charter, select, uh, section 4.10 requirements, and audit standard requirements. Risk was the primary factor in selecting projects for the 2021 Annual Audit Plan. Risks in some areas of the county are higher than others for many reasons. Those areas of the county which are higher in risk will receive more audit services than those of lower risk. However, the areas of lower risk were not ignored, rather they were, they will receive audit services less frequently and more or more narrowly scoped than the higher risk areas. In addition to risk, occasionally commissioners or management requested audit services to assist with a potential concern or to provide advisory services focusing on opportunities to improve overall operations which are already in place or opportunities that are on the horizon. Because the county internal auditor's office functions as a business partner, commissioner and management requests are seriously considered in the selection of all audit services. As part of the risk assessment and planning process, the county internal auditor solicited input from commissioners, senior staff, second line defense managers, the clerk of circuit court, senior director of the county audit department, RSM, which is the external audit firm, county audit committee, as well as others. This page contains administrative items required by the auditing standards. The internal audit activity conforms to these standards. I'm not gonna go into them at this time. I'll leave the board to read those on their own. Um, under the risk assessment methodology, the risk assessment process combines information obtained from narratives, internal control questionnaires, management self-assessment surveys, current events, unauthorized purchase reports, performance of audit services, and communications with key personnel. The county internal auditor also considered risk information derived by the county, um, by the county audit department, RSM, and RSL. Um, and we do that every year to coordinate and so we don't duplicate efforts and we minimize, um, that we wanna minimize duplication efforts as well as provide enough coverage of the risk in the county. Uh, the risk assessment methodology was in accordance with the professional standards. Uh, as you can see, there were several risks this year. Um, in 2020, there were significant areas of risk in the audible environment. Uh, this was for the most part due to unprecedented public health concerns. COVID-19 impacted nearly all of the county's operations from departments, um, on the front line to the support departments who provide the resources necessary for successful frontline operations. The high-risk areas for 2021 fall into five key categories: COVID-19 response, organizational changes, technology and cyber resilience, outsourced processes, and changes to laws, rules, regulations, and county ordinances. The county internal auditor wasn't formed, hasn't formed the county administrator of these emerging risks and situations that may have a negative impact to the county operations and programs, and I will continue to form the county administrator throughout the year. Finding audit services for all of the identified risks in the 2021 Risk Assessment, Commissioner and Management suggestions in the carryover of the 2020 Annual Audit Plan are greater than the available county internal audit resources. Therefore, after careful, careful review of the risk assessment results, audit resource allocation, and management requests for audits, the county internal auditor developed the 2021 Annual Audit Plan. The Audit Plan is, is just a tool for use of the, of the county's resources. As such, um, is subject to change throughout the year as audible environment changes. Uh, and those changes to the Audit Plan will be coming back to the Board for acceptance, and they will also go through the Audit, yeah, um, committee. Uh, the county internal audit reports will be issued during the year, um, as we perform the audits. Um, this Audit Plan, um, contains five assurance projects and 11 other services. Uh, additional other service projects, um, will be determined added later date. The Audit Plan was reviewed by the county internal audit committee for input. The committee determined that the county internal auditor performed an annual risk assessment based on her judgment of risks after consideration of input from senior management and the commissioners, and after sharing information coordinating with other internal and external providers of assurance and consulting services. The committee also determined that the 21 Annual Plan, the hours, um, the resource requirements align with the available resource budget. Therefore, pursuant to resolution R-20-011, the Audit Committee is recommending the Board to approve this Audit Plan. The committee's letter is located in the last page of the report. Um, that concludes my presentation. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have prior to vote, to voting to accept the plan.
Thank you, Ms. Caskey. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Um, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Caskey, for your report, but I think I wanna thank you the most for the advisory services that you launched this year with all of the massive programs that we had to roll out given COVID-19. Uh, your department's assistance within all of our departments to give them guidance on how to not only deliver the services to our citizens, but to account for that so that the audit comes back, um, whole and happy, um, is, is a testament to the teamwork that you have, um, adopted. Um, as we've broken down silos among all the different departments, this is an opportunity for the excellence that we'd like to achieve within the county, and thank you for your work. With that, I move the acceptance of the report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Smith to accept the report. Uh, seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caskey. Appreciate it. Ms. Wise?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if you all could, um, waive the rules so that we can take item B-13. I believe everybody is here for that item, which is the, uh, not to exceed $85 million of Hillsborough County wastewater impact fee special assessment bonds.
I move to waive the rules.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman to waive the rules. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row on waiving the rules.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Hagan. I'm here.
Okay.
I'll make sure the clerk is aware.
Okay. Clerk, did you get that?
I did, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wise?
All righty, thank you. Um, and now item B-13, um, and Kevin Brickie is going to start this, um, discussion. I want you to know that we have representatives, um, from our bond council as well as, um, from wastewater who can assist us in this matter and the county attorney's office too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brickie. You're recognized.
Thank you very much. Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. Kevin Brickie, management budget. B-13 is asking you to adopt a resolution to issue series 2021 wastewater impact fee special assessment revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $85 million. And these, this bond would provide financing for all or a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, equipment, and renovation of the county's wastewater system related to expansion of the system to provide additional wastewater capacity, particularly in South County, and to provide payment, uh, of these bonds from, uh, certain wastewater impact fee special assessments from 43 existing, uh, uh, impact fee special assessment areas, and to authorize the county attorney and the county's bond council to pursue validation of these series 2021 bonds by instituting a bond validation, uh, action under state law. Okay, um, available for questions?
I see no questions. Mr. Brickie, what's your pleasure?
Never pervert. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B-3. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're now going to go to the regular agenda. Those are all of our time certainties that have been completed. Um, the first item is item B-5, and this is, um, with facilities management and sustainability, and P-3, John Muller is here to present this, um, modification for your.
Mr. Miller, recognize.
Okay, good morning, sir. Good morning, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon. Excuse me. You're right. The days are blending into one. My apologies. End the mornings.
I had to do it. I'm sorry.
You got me. So, uh, Agenda A, item B-5 is a request for your approval to increase the county agreement with Tampa Bay Train to continue our replacement of the HVAC units on each individual floor of county center. Uh, the project, which is managed by our, uh, Public Works Capital Project Team, began in 2017. Currently, six floors are completed, 11 floors are designed and awaiting installation, and three floors are in preliminary planning. Your approval of this item will allow us to complete four additional floors between now and early summer of next year, which is a completion rate almost double of previous installations. This approval in conjunction, in conjunction with leveraging remote work capabilities are allowing us to accelerate the project schedule. I will stop there and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I see no question. What's your permission?
Never.
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B-5. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is item B-6. This is to acquire a certain property in the Brandon area, and John Lyons will lead this discussion.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, we're asking you to approve by a supermajority vote the contract for sale and purchase of real property with Giselle Exian Henry Wales to acquire approximately 10.74 acres of land located at 304 West Lumpston Road in Brandon. Uh, property, there's a map of the property in the back, backup as well. Additionally, we'd like to approve the post-closing occupancy agreement, which is in the exhibit as well, which be the seller's continued use of the property post-closing for purposes, closing out the seller's business operations. And finally, also to approve a budget amendment resolution to appropriate $3.4 million from Library Tax District project fund reserves into the Brandon Library Replacement Phase One project, uh, to fund the acquisition of this parcel. Uh, this project is the preferred location of the library services board, or the library services team, and is supported by the library services board. Uh, we've additionally acquired two properties adjacent to this in 2019. So the total acreage we would have assembled would be 16.57 acres, and we would plan on having a master plan put together for looking at other uses of the property which could include affordable housing and other county services as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move approval?
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B-6. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Yes, and thank you, commissioners. That was another one that, um, was cross-departmental, and so many people working to make that happen. So thank you to John Lyons, especially in Tom Bass. Alrighty, um, the next item is item, um, B-8, and it is the performance appraisal for Peggy Caskey, and it is related also to item B-9 as well. So, and Ivy Martin will take us through the next few agenda items.
Good afternoon, Ms. Martin.
Good afternoon. Uh, within the county, it's consistently encouraged that supervisors and leaders provide regular feedback to their employees and their performance. And like most organizations, Hillsborough County has an annual performance evaluation program as well. This annual evaluation process also extends to the board's contracted employees. Each year, typically during the second board meeting in October, the board completes the performance appraisals for the contract employees and approves any contract extensions if applicable. Today, we're doing the performance evaluations for two of your contract employees, the internal auditor and the county attorney. The way the process works is that each of the contracted employees completes a self-evaluation, and then that evaluation is shared with the board. The commissioners then, uh, compile all of their ratings and return them. They are then gathered and averaged, um, to determine what the board's evaluation will be. First, uh, we have the, uh, agenda item B-8 to complete the annual performance appraisal process for Peggy Caskey, the internal auditor. There is no financial impact at this time. The overall rating for performance dimensions is 4.8, and the overall rating on performance objectives is 4.9.
Okay. Uh, what's your position on the acceptance and the complete performance appraisal? As a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp.
Smith.
So was that Smith? I'm sorry. Uh, to approve item B-8, seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Martin?
Item B-9 is to request that the board approve a two-year contract extension for the county internal auditor through December 31st of 2023. The current contract modification was entered into on October 16th, 2019, and will expire on December 31st, 2021. It is customary that the board make the decision on continue, on the continuation of the contracted employee's contract a year prior to its expiration. There is no financial impact for the fiscal years of '20 and '21. Future financial impact is determined based upon performance and board action.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. I mean, the skip, you recognize. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Thank you. And I just wanna make clear from the start, um, that I did, uh, give very high marks to, um, our auditor, as well as our county attorney, um, on their performance reviews. But I, it was a little unclear to me as I was, um, reviewing this, that the contract, um, doesn't expire this December 31st of 2020, but December 31st of 2021. So already, there's 14 months in that contract, and on top of that, this is for another two years. Um, and to me, this seems to be doing, um, it, uh, a bit premature at this time. It would seem to me that we should be evaluating this in October of next year. I know that you just said one year out. Um, I, I actually, after this is over, um, would like to make a motion with regards to that because I, I find that to be, we're, we're now going into 26 months, um, and extending the contract into 2023, which I think is, uh, not really, uh, it's not the best public policy in terms of how we deal with these contracts. So I, I would, um, not, I'm not supporting that. I'd like to make a substitute motion to.
There's no motion. Make it, Commissioner Kemp.
Sorry. Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to extend the contract for one year on top of these 14 months. So that would be for 26 months, um, going forward.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion. I'll second for discussion because I'd like to ask a question.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, um, well, Commissioner White's next. Commissioner White, your hand is up.
Yes, sir. I just wanna say that, I just wanna say that, um, um, I will not be supporting the motion. Um, in, in fact, um, before I offer any comments, let me just go ahead and make a substitute motion, uh, that we do extend the contract to December 31st, 2023.
Second, second by, I said too much about Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman.
Okay. And, and if I still have the floor, if I still have the floor, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna say that, um, continuity in this organization is important, and our contract employees, um, have to know that, 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 uh, they have our full faith and confidence. I do wanna remind, um, my colleagues and the public that, um, we can terminate, uh, this contract at any time for performance-related issues. Uh, but obviously, we've all given, um, Ms. Caskey high marks. Um, she's deserving of the two-year contract extension. Um, that, that promotes continuity, gives her peace of mind that she has the full faith and confidence of this board. And, um, and, and my stance will be the same when we get to, uh, to Ms. Beck's contract, but, but I'm in full support of the, of the two-year, uh, extension out to 2023. And again, I just can't stress enough that this board at any time with any of our contract employees, uh, can terminate an individual, uh, based upon performance issues. And, and clearly, there are none for, for either one of these individuals, uh, based upon the scores.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Uh, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And, and clearly, there is, there are no performance issues. Um, we have very high marks for both of these individuals. Um, but the consistency, um, that you mentioned, Commissioner White, is important. And as I go through, um, this contract, I see that in October of 2018, it was extended through 2020, and then in 2019, it was extended through 2021. And that means that in 2020, it should be extended through 2022, which would be, you know, putting it out, um, a little over two years ahead at a time. So it, it does seem like this was jumping out farther ahead than we, uh, than we typically have done. Um, and, and 2022, the end of 2022 would give it, you know, would give it two years at a time. It would also ensure that the next board has a chance to review these contracts rather than putting it beyond the two-year terms of the incoming board members. And that seems to me to be fair and good policy as well. So, so that's, I mean, it, to me, it's just about consistency, good government, good policy in these contracts, nothing to do with, um, anything else. But, I mean, a two-year, a two-year contract extension is a, a, a vote of confidence. So, nobody should take this as anything less than that. Thank you.
Let me, let me tell members, when you're speaking, please put your cameras on. I think the public deserves to see your face when you're speaking.
Sorry, I didn't realize that.
Thank you. Let me say something. I agree with Commissioner White, and let me make it perfectly clear. This is not the first time we've done this. I've held this board 10 years, and we've been doing it that way for, for 10 years. And I'm almost certain that, uh, that some of you on this board did the same thing, uh, if you were here with, uh, Mr. Merrill, or with Mr. Merrill's contract, uh, to do, to have the same vote. This discussion did not come up at that time. So I'm gonna support, uh, the substitute motion by Commissioner White. Uh, we have no further discussion. As a substitute motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Kemp and Smith voted no.
Where are we here? Ms. Martin, I'm sorry.
Item B-10, to complete the annual performance appraisal process for Christine Beck, county attorney. There is no financial impact at this time. The overall rating for the performance dimensions is 4.9, and the overall ratings on performance objectives is also 4.9.
Move the item.
Motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B-10. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Martin, B-11.
Item B-11 is requesting that the board approve a two-year contract extension for the county attorney through December 31st, 2023. The current contract modification was entered into on October 16th, 2019, and will expire on December 31st, 2021. Again, it is customary that the board make a decision to continue the contract prior to its expiration. There's no financial impact for fiscal years '20 or '21. The future financial impact is determined based on performance and board action.
Move the item.
Second.
As a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, thank you. And as it relates to, to the previous contract approval and, and this one as well, I, I, I hear, um, Commissioner Kemp's and, and Smith's concern. I also recognize having a, a year of exposure after an election to get to know that person and their professional experience. experience and duties is, in addition to all the other things you got to learn, is a mammoth task. And to be fair to those professionals that serve not only our board but all of the staff, I think having that off-election year cycle seems to make sense to me. It made sense to me the first time I had to actually go through this process. So I'm going to support the motion.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Just to be clear, it's something that is done every year, every year. So in 2018, we extended it to 2020. In 2019, we extended it to 2021. So in 2020, it seems consistent. And in fact, it says to be consistent, but it's not. In 2020, we should be doing it for 2022. And that would give, you know, every board a chance at approving these contracts annually. And so that's the process question that I just think should be adhered to year after year. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. And I appreciate Commissioner Smith pointing out that historic consistency and retaining that. I think that that is good public policy, what we have done in the past. And I think we should continue to do that. And so for that reason, I would be voting against a motion if it's made for two years. And again, I'd like to emphasize, I gave the highest of ratings to both the county auditor and the county attorney. So this is not anything to do with that. I just think it's a matter of good public policy and consistency to continue with the process that we've had in the past.
Okay. We have a motion for by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item B 11. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Kemp? Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Kemp and Smith voted no.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Wise, you recognize?
Thank you. The next three items are to approve modifications to care funding agreements with the very, with the city of Tampa, Plant City, and the city of Temple Terrace. Kevin Brickie is going to provide some background on these items.
Mr. Brickie, you recognize that?
Thank you. Kevin Brickie, management and budget. B 14 is indeed the first of three modifications to your CARES Act funding agreements with the cities. B 14 is the modification of the CARES Act agreement with the city of Tampa, which would provide an additional $10 million for a total of $30 million from our CARES Act funds. This is additional to the $20 million that the board approved in early September. I'm available for any questions.
There's approval.
Okay, we're on 13 about correct?
B 13, B 14?
B 14.
Oh, B 13.
14.
Was it one thirty? Or time certain?
I'm sorry?
B 13 was a time certain.
Okay, you're right. I'm going to get the wrong guy. Whoa, B 14. I'm sorry. B 14. Who made the motion?
Item Kimberly Everman.
Motion by Commissioner, I'm getting a lot of feedback from someone. I don't know where it's coming from. But I'm getting some feedback. So if you're not speaking, please put your microphones on mute. So motion by Commissioner Overman, who was the second by?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Merman. To approve B 14. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Brickie?
B 15 is asking for approval of the first modification of the CARES Act funding agreement with the city of Plant City. This modification will provide an additional $2 million in CARES Act funding for a total of $6 million to the city of Plant City. I'm available for questions.
Motion by Commissioner Overman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith to approve B 15. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Brickie?
Yes, Commissioners. B 16 is the first modification of the CARES Act funding agreement with the city of Temple Terrace. This modification will provide an additional $2,671,183 of CARES Act funding to Temple Terrace for a total of $2.9 million. I'm available for questions.
What's your pleasure?
Move the item.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White to approve item B 16. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
B 17, Mr. Brickie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. B 17 is asking you to approve a resolution allocating up to $100,000 in funding to Beale'sville, Inc., and the related funding agreement for $100,000, which will provide funding for the replacement of auditorium flooring, including the hallways and storage area, replacement of air conditioning in the auditorium, and modifying historic signage at the Glover School. I'm available for questions.
What's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B 12. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, as the commissioner that championed this item, I'm glad to see it moving forward and coming to fruition. I want to thank staff for their work on this. And I know that the Beale'sville community is extremely excited about this initiative. Thank you.
Good. Very good. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item are your board appointments. And, uh, Lou Anne, that's here. Take you through those.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have four boards to make appointments to. Your first board is your Diversity Advisory Council. We will choose one from each category. We can do one category at a time. Commissioner Miller?
Hold on. Commissioner White, I see your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I don't know whether or not this is the appropriate time, but looking ahead to the Hart Board appointments, I just want to say for the record that in the past, I've taken a go-along-to-get-along stance on waiving the rules and approving committee members that reside within city limits. But I think the time has come to honor that policy and make sure that unincorporated Hillsborough County is represented on that board. So when we move ahead to the Hart Board, I just want my colleagues here on this county commission to know that I don't think we should waive the rules. I do think that we should appoint members from unincorporated Hillsborough County. My picks will certainly reflect that. That is no disrespect to some of the incumbents on the board. I have very good relationships with all those folks. But I do want to assure that unincorporated Hillsborough County is properly and adequately represented.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
I was going to make a similar comment when we got to the Hart Board, but thank you for raising that. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me a moment on the heels of what Commissioner White says. And as the chair of the Hart Board, I would like to point out that these appointments are specifically for representatives who live in the unincorporated area of the county. And I think that's very important that because 68% of our county's citizens live in the unincorporated area, and it's very important that they have a voice on this board that spends their taxes on this countywide transit agency. So while I'm at it, I'll just point out that the Hart Board is 14 members, four from the city of Tampa, one from Temple Terrace, two from the state, one of those seats is empty, the seat that's filled is not even in Hillsborough County. So that's seven of the 14 are not in unincorporated. Now, Hillsborough County gets the other seven seats, but four of them are county commissioners, plus three appointees. And of our four county commissioners, I'm the only one who does not live in the city of Tampa. So that means 10 of the 14 board members do not live in unincorporated area. And until we appoint three more members, I'm the only one who lives in unincorporated. And it makes it especially important that we use those last three seats as they are intended, as our policies direct us to use them, to represent the 68% of our county taxpayers living in the unincorporated area. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Also, I'd like to comment on Hart, but not in the same vein exactly. I just like to, I don't see that we're going to necessarily be doing anything about it. But I do have a concern that the Hart Board is poised right now in the middle of a process to hire a new CEO. And apparently, we're going to be doing final interviewing and possibly voting on this on November 2nd. And these members today would be appointed in advance of that. I suppose it'll take place at the next meeting. So I just have my concerns about the, this process poised right on this to have three, possibly three new board members, I don't know, at that time. I'm just expressing that concern. I think it is a, it's a very real concern for me that we've been through this process for such a long time. And we might lose three members that were involved, we may not. But I'd just like to express that concern.
I'm going to call on the county attorney to make a comment on what Commissioner Kemp just said. But let me make one thing perfectly clear. Again, Commissioner Kemp, you said the same thing in 2018 when we were getting ready for land use meeting, that you thought that we should not have a land use meeting at that time until after the elections are over with. Again, these members on this board have a responsibility to do our job, and these appointments have to be made within a certain timeframe. And I'm going to call on the county attorney to please reiterate why we have to do this today.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Christine Beck, county attorney. In preparing for this item, we did review the Hart Charter as well as Florida statutes related to the Hart Charter. And it provides specifically that an appointment to fill a vacancy shall be made before expiration of the remaining term. The terms that we're talking about expire on October 31st. And that's why this is really the last board meeting where there's an opportunity to not have a lapse there and run the risk of the Hart Board or somebody else being able to make those appointments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
No, it's Commissioner Smith?
I see Commissioner Kemp. Okay. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes. Back to the point that Commissioner White and I were making, just to clarify something, I see that one of the current board members who does not live in the unincorporated area has listed my name as a reference along with two other commissioners. And I did not authorize this. So I don't want the board to be confused by that. The form specifically asks to please list only those persons who have given their consent to be used as a reference. So I wanted to make you all aware that I am not endorsing any of the current candidates who do not live in the unincorporated areas. My goal to fill these seats with representatives from the unincorporated area. So just to clear that up. Thank you.
Okay. Let us proceed with the appointment process. Ms. Finley?
Okay. Your first board is your Diversity Advisory Council. For the African-American category, Commissioner Miller, please choose one.
Number four.
Commissioner Overman?
Number eight.
Commissioner White?
Number four.
Commissioner Merman?
Number four.
Commissioner Hagan?
Four.
Commissioner Smith?
Four.
Commissioner Kemp?
Couldn't get my cursor there. Four.
It will be Sabrina Griffiths, reappointed as the African-American category. The next category is at-large. Please choose one. Commissioner Miller?
Number 12.
Commissioner Overman?
Number 10.
Commissioner White?
Number nine.
Commissioner Merman?
Number 12.
Commissioner Hagan? Commissioner Hagan?
Nine.
Commissioner Smith?
Twelve.
And Commissioner Kemp?
Twelve.
It will be Virgil Perry, reappointed to the at-large position. For the Caribbean, Kenneth Christie will be appointed. For the Hispanic Latino, Commissioner Miller, please choose one.
Number 15.
Commissioner Overman?
Fifteen.
Commissioner White?
Fifteen.
Commissioner Merman?
Fifteen.
Commissioner Hagan?
Fourteen.
Commissioner Smith?
Fifteen.
Commissioner Kemp?
Fifteen.
It will be Elania Centron. And your last one, Matthew Trunisky, will be appointed to the lesbian, bisexual, gay, transgender position. Your next board is your Hart Board. Commissioner Miller, please choose three.
Excuse me, number 21, number 24, number 29.
Commissioner Overman?
Can I ask a point of procedure regarding the issue of residency? Were we going to waive that requirement? Or are we going to run with whether or not the residency is required in this? If it's not waived, that will change my vote. But if it is waived-
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to not waive the residency requirement.
Second.
As a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith to not waive the residency requirement. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Yeah. Maybe it's legal, but I'm sorry, but I think it's a matter of fundamental fairness. We're going to have them apply or reapply. And then suddenly, we're going to say, okay, you have to live in unincorporated right now. Something just is a very, very bad taste in my mouth on that. So perhaps it's legal, but I think that's a bad act to follow.
Is there any other further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes. Can we get staff? Yes, um, can we get staff to confirm that the, um, it, uh, the requirement for, and it says right on the applications, the requirement for these positions is that they live in unincorporated. We can, we can waive that, but, but these seats are reserved for unincorporated, uh, these few seats on a 14-member board to represent the 68% of taxpayers who support Hart.
Who'd you ask the question of?
Luanne, Ms. Finley.
The, the application and the notice of openings did say that the past, uh, three cycles that we've advertised this board, I've been told by commissioners to list everybody and to put that waiver in the comment section. And so I spoke with the chair this time to ask if we should continue with that, and he said just to continue doing how we've done it in the past. And.
Commissioner?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Smith, you still have the floor?
That's good enough. It, the requirement is that they live in the unincorporated, three out of 14 seats, uh, supported by, uh, countywide taxpayers.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize? Okay, we have a motion on the, we have a motion on the floor, uh, at this time. You, Mr. Commissioner, who made the motion? Commissioner White, you want to restate your motion?
Yes, sir. The motion was simply to not, uh, waive the residency requirement that the app, that the, uh, those chosen live in unincorporated Hillsborough County.
Okay. Motion, please call the roll.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Uh, yes.
Merman?
Yes, yes.
Oberman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Miller and Hagan voted no.
So let me get a clear understanding here from our county attorney. What is the process here? We have these people apply, now what are we, the process is for the selection of members of the Hart Board?
Mr. Chair, uh, if you're, if you're not wanting to waive the policy, then you would simply need to vote for somebody in the unincorporated area according to your board policy.
So the motion we just took means that anyone, anyone who lives within the city limits is null and void at this particular point in time?
Mm-hmm.
I want a clarification from the attorney.
Yeah, that, that's how I understood it, is that your, the board has taken a position to not waive their policy collectively for these positions.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, Finley, uh, proceed, ma'am.
So we remove Charles Cook, Adam Harden, David Mechanic, and Hoyt Prindle from consideration. So please choose three, Commissioner Miller.
Number 18, number 24, and number 29.
Commissioner Oberman?
Uh, 20, 22, and 29.
Commissioner White?
23, 24, and 25.
Commissioner Merman?
23, 24, 29.
Commissioner Hagan?
24, 25, and 29.
Commissioner Smith?
22, oh, wait, yeah, 22, 25, and 29.
Commissioner Kemp?
Uh, 22, 25, and 29.
Your vote will be Rena Upshaw Frazier, Marvin Knight, and Eric Johnson. Your next board is your Child Care Licensing Advisory Board. Commissioner Miller, um, we have two positions that are open. Um, I believe there was a, an attendance issue with, with one of these.
So what are we doing here, Ms. Ms. Finley? We, we can one on.
There was an attendance issue with, uh, Ms. Donkey.
Okay. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We're talking to Ms. Finley now. Everybody can't talk at the same time. Ms. Finley, could you completely continue, please?
Because of the attendance issue, it's recommended that we aver, that we re-advertise for the second position.
Okay.
And then Mary Maury would be appointed to the first position.
Second.
Okay, well, wait a minute. Let me share the meeting, please, y'all, okay? Uh, we're trying to get some clarification here, and everyone's talking, and I can't get any clarification. There was an addendum sheet that was sent out. We're trying to get clarification so we don't make any mistakes on these appointments. So, Ms. Finley, would you please, please clarify exactly what you're talking about, please?
Ms., Ms. Donkey was appointed to this board in 2017. Her term ended this year, June of this year, and when I asked for an attendance record, she had only attended one meeting in 2017 and was absent from all other meetings.
Okay.
So I recommend re-advertising.
Yes, I'll make a motion to re-advertise.
Motion about Commissioner Merman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oberman to re-advertise that one position. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I was gonna do. My apologies.
Okay, all right. Is any further discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Oberman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Your last board, your last board is the Public Art Committee. It's continued from the seven, September 16th meeting. There was a tie vote between the three individuals listed. Please choose one, Commissioner Miller.
Number 34.
Commissioner Oberman?
32.
Commissioner White?
32.
Commissioner Merman?
34.
Commissioner Hagan?
34.
Commissioner Smith?
33.
Commissioner Kemp?
33.
Okay, David Valdez has three votes. The other two have two. You can waive your policy to take the person with the highest vote. Someone can change their vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll change my vote to 34.
Okay.
Okay, so David Valdez will be appointed to the Public Art Committee.
Motion to confirm?
Move to confirm.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman to confirm the appointments. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Oberman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Um, Ms. Wise?
Yes, sir. Um, the last item is, um, item F4, which is Commissioner Oberman's item, um, requesting us to bring back a strategy to address the, um, uh, residents suffering from effects of the pandemic. It's Commissioner Oberman's item.
So, what do you recognize?
Thank you. I am looking for where it is. Oh, okay, so this item is to bring, um, add direct staff to bring back to the November 12th meeting, uh, a comprehensive housing strategy to address the issues that Hillsborough County residents are suffering from the effect of, of the pandemic in the coming months. Clearly, with the changes in eviction laws, with the exhaustion of our rental and utility applications, uh, commitment, as well as the high levels of unemployment, we're gonna need to have some solutions. So I'd love for staff to bring us back some solutions, uh, on the November 12th meeting.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Oberman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller? Miller?
I think he's frozen.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you. Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp? Kemp? I'll come back. Merman?
Yes.
Oberman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Kemp?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Ms. Wise?
Uh, your next item are future discussion items.
Are there any future discussion items? Anyone have, Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Yes, um, I have a, this is with regards to, um, Mr. Harwell's public comment this morning. I'm requesting that Development Services staff report back to the board about the issues raised by Mr. Harwell at public comment about the difficulties he faced appealing a luho decision, including the process for a resident to appeal, why his efforts fell short, and recommendations for making the process more user-friendly for residents. The case number for that case is, uh, Special Use SU-19-1026. So I'd like staff to look into that. I have a second future item as well.
Continue.
My second future item is that I was approached, um, by, uh, someone living in an apartment, uh, complex, and, um, even they had paid, uh, rent, they were up on their rent, and they had notified, uh, the, um, uh, apartment owner that they were leaving within the appropriate amount of time. And when they got ready to move, they got, um, served with a, what happened was the apartment complex, um, was sold in the meantime, uh, and they got noticed that they would owe $1,000 just to move when they, they did, they had been paid up on their rent and they had gotten proper notice. And the person was panicked and didn't know what to do, and got a friend's advice to send a certified letter, and so, um, we're seeing how that goes. But as we know, many, many, many people, more than usual, are very vulnerable during this time, and we're about to see a whole lot more. As I have stated before, I was a lawyer for legal services. We had a tenant landlord division at legal services. I can only imagine how overwhelmed they might be in the coming months, and I, as well, our own consumer, uh, department. So I'm just thinking that we probably need to gear up in some way, our services, to accommodate, uh, people that are, uh, have circumstances, uh, like this, just so they can know how to respond. And I'm just, would like staff to kind of, uh, investigate with our, our legal, uh, office, um, our county attorney, um, as well as, uh, the administrator, to figure out, uh, what we might do, how we might gear up, beef up in the coming months, uh, to start to accommodate, um, what I see as likely a surge of requests for assistance.
Okay. Uh, any other further, any other future, uh, discussion items? Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Kemp, your hand's still up, you have, you have another one? Okay. Anyone else? Anything else, Ms. Wise?
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Ms. Beck?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls of all ages, we are adjourned. Be careful and stay safe.
Stay safe, everyone.